Well, we're all called. Ms. Segments here. Ms. Wacus is here. Mr. Keller. Mr. Snead. Ms. Howe. And myself. And I think Mr. Haas is probably outside. And I think Mr. Haas had an addition for the work session agenda, so when he arrives, we'll add that. And we'll wait for the adoption of work session agenda until Mr. Haas comes back in. But we'll begin with number one, Mr. Moses, Attorney Moses.
I'm here. I'm here.
Mr. Brominski?
Yes.
Your recorder is here.
Good evening. My name is Peter Moses. I'm here on behalf of the Northeastern Pennsylvania Hospital and Education Authority, seeking a spot on your agenda for your next meeting, which I believe is on July 24th. Asking you to consider a resolution for a new project. United Methodist Homes is doing a Brooks Estates project expansion. So you know the chronology here. On June 28th, the Northeastern Pennsylvania Hospital and Education Authority approved this plan for a bond deal. Before that bond deal can occur, we are required to have a TEFRA hearing, which we had earlier today at 3:00 PM, which was advertised publicly on June 22nd in the newspaper. The purpose of the TEFRA hearing is to learn if there are any objections or concerns on how this project would affect the health, safety, or welfare of Luzerne County. Because this project would take place in Jenkins Township, which is inside Luzerne County, it is required for the council to consider a resolution endorsing the project as one that would not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare of its residents. Just generally, we distributed a packet. It's the same packet that was used at the hospital authority meeting. There is information in there, including an aerial view of the planned location, a rendition of the planned project layout, a rendition of the planned exterior view, and a sample of the floor plan. If you're not familiar with this project, it is on the campus of Wesley Village, which is already located in Jenkins Township. Wesley Village is a 103 independent living cottages. It's a continuing care facility, and this plan would add an additional 73 cottage units, both adjacent to the current Brooks Estate Cottage and the multi-story building, which now houses the nurses and personal care services offered on the campus. So with that said, we just ask to be placed on the resolution for consideration, and if the council would like, we can be at the next meeting, or bring bond counsel with us, obviously, and answer any questions you have there.
You want to introduce the gentleman?
Sure. This is Gary Gardner. He's the Senior Vice President at Wesley Village, and he's here to answer any questions about the project you may have today as well.
Open up for questions. Ms. Howe?
Um, well, so this is United Methodist Homes?
Yes.
Does this fall under the jurisdiction of that authority?
Yes, because the authorities, the Northeastern Pennsylvania Hospital Education Authority, anything health-related or education-related. This is a continuing, traditionally, we've done numerous projects for Wesley Village, and this is, I think, the third?
Third.
Third time that they've come through our authority for a project with Luzerne County.
I think this is the first one since 2012, though.
Yes.
Okay. And what's the total amount of the project?
Twenty-six.
We're asking for approval for $26 million.
Right. And none of which the county is liable for.
No. And so the resolution will speak to that, and the resolution passed by our authority is that we're totally indemnified. There's no cost to the county. All the expenses, the lawyer's fees, the legal bills, that all comes out of the bond issue.
Right. And my final question is, do you have a limit as to how much you can approve within a year?
Yes.
And where does this take you within that limit?
We're okay for 2018, but we won't be able to do any more projects for this calendar year.
For 2018?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Segments?
First of all, I do want to say I have several friends whose parents are living in Wesley Village now and are very thankful for the programs that you offer. Secondly, I, it is a, there is, are two facilities, correct, in terms of long-term care and assisted living. Like, there's an assisted living part, and then really, for truly, you need it for total dependency.
Yeah, we've actually got three levels of care. Those with least need would be considered independent living by us, and we've actually got 103 cottages, which is, and we're talking about an expansion of that project.
That's what I wanted to know. Those cottages, the new cottages, are they divided into all three levels, or are they...
So then, then we've also got some independent living apartments. We've got personal care, which is kind of a mid-level form of assisted living, and then we've got skilled nursing. Skilled nursing is the highest level of care that we provide. Generally, all of the care in our skilled nursing environment would be under the auspices of physician orders. So we've got independent, personal care, and skilled nursing.
So the new expansion, is it for all three areas, or just for the skilled?
It is, it is, it is an independent expansion, but because we're a licensed CCRC under the Pennsylvania Department of Insurance, essentially, we're licensed to provide the whole continuum of care. So from, from an operational standpoint, we view those coming as independent residents as having kind of a priority status on our campus, with the ability to then move through whatever level of care they need as, as their needs change.
Any other questions? If not thanking, you'll be on the agenda for the next voting session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Haas, if you would indicate to me, you wanted to add something to the agenda.
Forgive me, Mr. Chair, I can still do that.
Sure.
Yeah, I have just some citizen inquiries about the Riverfront. I don't know if you can turn those down as, maybe just a troubleshooting, just a brief discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll make that number six.
Thank you.
You have motioned to approve the agenda with Mr. Haas's addition.
So, I'm, oh, second.
Mr. Keller, Mr. Snead, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Manager Pedri?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Obviously, council, we've submitted our division reports for the month. They'll be on our website, but I'm happy to report that they're going to be on our new website, starting tomorrow. The Luzerne County website, that was completed by Civic Plus, has been, we have been diligently working on it. Our IT department, as well as every division head and, and department head, have been spending an incredible amount of time on this new site, getting it up and running. It is a huge upgrade from the current PDF dump that we have, and it will be a website that we can be proud of, and we can utilize for travel purposes, for recruitment purposes. And most importantly, let's be honest, people going to Luzerne County website, they, they are looking for services. It's, it needs to be utilitarian. You know, if people are on our website, they're looking for firearms licenses in the Sheriff's Department. They're looking to try to figure out where they can park when they come on jury duty, and all those information will be there as well. Now, we're going to continue to add to this website as we move forward. This isn't the final product that you'll see tomorrow morning. We're going to add an inmate search tool that will be, that will be utilized for Luzerne County Correction Facility, that will list the inmate, when they're booked, and when their visiting hours are. That's the number-one phone call that Luzerne County Correction Facility gets the most. We're going to be adding a campaign finance section as well to the Election Bureau. What we have right now is a large PDF document with all of the campaign finance documents in there that's not searchable. This way, every single candidate and committee will have a separate, a separate easy-to-search tab in purposes for transparency from our Election Bureau, in addition to an incredible amount of other services that, that we've seen. It's been a large amount of time and effort. We're going to continue to tweak it as we move forward with such things, such as headshots for, for photos, and I hope to see everybody on council at the, at one of the two photo sessions. So we have a consistent and professional website and a consistent professional, professional appearance to the our community. We've made some huge strides here in Luzerne County, and this website is really the window to that. So if we can draw more and more attention to Luzerne County and all the things we're doing here through this website, be utilitarian, but also show some of the good things we're doing here, it's a good opportunity. So be sure to check out the website tomorrow morning, and email me or email our Director of IT tomorrow, if there's any changes that you'd like to see or any suggestions that you have as we move forward with the new website. I have set forth to county council my next 90-day goals. This is not something that I'm required to do, but since I became county manager, I said this is something I want to do. And I've tasked our division heads and really challenged them to come up with, not the day-to-day opportunities, just if, if it's not going to be just your normal day-to-day job, what's the next goal? Where is your division going? Where are we going in the next 90 days? That way, every division's going to have four major projects completed a year, four major steps moving the county forward. I have them listed in the agenda packet today. I'll just highlight a couple of them. In admin services, obviously, the website, we're going to be hitting that 90-day goal pretty quickly. That was kind of low-hanging fruit, Dave Parsnick, now I think about it. So, but a big one will be the Office of Community Development, and we're going to be reviewing and approving the projects submitted by the Community Development Infrastructure Front. If you recall, the federal authorities allowed $15 million to be utilized by municipalities for shovel-ready projects in federal, in federal monies. The Community Development Project will be reviewing those projects over the next 90 days and hopefully get that, those construction projects started. Moving forward to Budget and Financial Services, the continued goal, and we'll get this done in the next 90 days, is to combine the county payrolls into one cycle. We had a preliminary date of doing this actually later this month. However, we ran into a couple snags here. We want to make sure this is done the right way, so we've had to postpone it, but we will be completed this quarter. Our Division of Correctional Services will continue to do safety procedures as well over the next 90 days, complete firearm certification, develop, implement training policies. Mr. Rakovich continues to upgrade our security services at correctional services. The Division of Human Services will have an open-table launch. This is where Luzerne and Wyoming Counties are working on a transformative proprietary model. It's focused on relational and economic poverty. This is the documentation that we need to truly serve those who need our help the most. How do we focus on, on our young adults? How do we take care of our kids coming out of foster care and young adults? How do we make sure that they don't go the wrong path? Ms. Hill has taken on this initiative, and the next 90 days, we're going to be seeing some major movement on it. The Sheriff's Office has been working with IT on this in-house cost calculator. The number-one phone call that the Sheriff's Department gets is how much is a service going to cost for a particular document? There's a lot of factors that have to come into play, and now, we'll have an in-house cost calculator. Once again, customer service will be better, and most importantly, our employees won't be having to, to utilize, take time away from their other duties in order to continue to track down this information, and it's a much easier way to go about doing business. Our Office of Law will continue to work with our Parents Council and are preparing a CLE presentation, and we're going to finalize electronic processing of management-approved contracts. This is something I identified when I was in the Slister's office, and I applaud Ms. Crocomo for taking it on. Our contracts sometimes go through three or four different buildings in in-house mail before they come to be signed off on. So it is pretty impressive. This was a, a piece of property that we utilized at the tornado over in Wokesbury Township, and that will also be completed. And the Public Defender is going to continue to do a new program to analyze the data of prison population, determine who's incarcerated, why they are, and what steps can be taken to reduce the population. This is not something, this is something we started with our Prison Population Task Force. We're not looking to, there are some very dangerous people out there, and those people need a high bail, but if you have somebody in on a very low amount of bail, why are they being incarcerated? Do they need access to attorneys sooner? When is their court date? All of these things are going to hopefully come into play with regards to the next 90 days for Mr. Greenwald. So I applaud the division heads for taking all these challenges. I put them out in public because it needs to hold, we need to be held accountable to those. And with that being said, I'll open myself up for any questions on any of the division head reports or any other county issue at this time.
Questions for the manager?
Look, I don't know if it wouldn't fall under division head, but I want to thank you for sending the photos of the roads as they're being resurfaced, repaired, rebuilt, whatever the correct terminology is.
Right.
And I think Wayne and his crew are doing, I don't know if he's here or not, they're doing a fantastic job.
They've made a real difference. They've made a real difference. Mr. O'Neill combined all of our road and bridge crew. At one point, we had over 55 guys in road and bridge. We currently have 11, and we combined all the road and bridge crew into, into that paving project. We've done some really good things out on Main Road, Hillside, a lot of the, a lot of the roads in Chase, in the Back Mountain. I'm going to be working with Eddie O'Neill on this as well. We're going to take some of those pictures of the, of our bridges and our roads, and we're going to put those up on the website as well. I think people need to see what we're doing here. We're going to continue with, with our major projects. The major project that, that we're working on right now is going to be the full-depth reclamation in Butler Township, Cunningham and Sugarloaf Borough. And once that's completed, that seven miles is completed, all three of those municipalities have agreed to take over ownership of that property. It'll be the first time the county has ever gotten rid of a road in recent memory, and I hope other municipalities, and all the guys on the road and bridge crew especially, they've been out working, paving, had some real hot days. You know, some 95, 100-degree days, and they were out there paving, and, you know, they made a difference. And if you go out to Main Road right now, how bad that was in Sweet Valley, if you go out to the Huntsville Dam area in the Back Mountain, how bad that was, and what it looks like now, there's really been some movement on that.
It's, it's just wonderful. I'm just so happy to see that, and, you know, it's, I also, before I forget, thank you very much, Eddie, or, and also you. I see not only the projects, but the locations. Thank you so much.
We got there.
It helps me so much.
We got there. It took Ms. Howe eight months to get me to get the right report, only, only three for you, so I'm, I'm better off.
Thank you.
I'm coming around.
Ms. Segments?
Yeah, I think it's great about the website. That website needed a lot of work, and this is wonderful, and I'm just hoping that you advertise it, that you advertise it in the paper, that people know that there's a website out there, that they can find out all this information and not waste the phone calls.
Sure.
So...
Absolutely, and I, and I, and I think, I'll be doing a press, press release tomorrow as well, on it, and I hope that people will draw attention to it.
Dave, what time does it go live?
6:00 AM.
6:00 AM, okay.
Unless something else gets changed while, while we've been here. But, but, but one thing, one, one area that, that I do hope is, will be on this website, and that we got away from when we were doing the rotunda project, weddings at the courthouse. I'm going to be doing a separate press release on weddings at the courthouse. You can rent the Luzerne County rotunda for $500, and you can have a beautiful wedding here at, at the rotunda. Take our pictures outside with our new landscaping. This is the People's Courthouse. I think people should be able to have that addition there for, for a small fee that goes to the Luzerne County General Fund. So hopefully, those, those weddings will be from there. I am not going into wedding planning business. That being said, we'll be happy to provide the venue, if so be so.
Well, you know, there are a lot of places now, Princeton's coming up, that are having wedding programs, if you're a vendor or something. Or maybe you should have at least someone go there to talk about the rotunda being used.
I think, I think Dave Parsnick would be the, the best.
I think.
I'd be like...
I think. Get a tuxedo and, yeah.
I think that would probably be, he'd be great at that job, going out, talking to expecting brides to, to come to, to that.
I volunteer. That should be put up in the next voting session.
Other questions? Ms. Howe?
I have two questions on the activities with boilers, my favorite subject, Mr. Pedri.
Sure.
So in your report, it says that the old boilers were removed and the new boiler startup is moved to 2018-0709. So I don't know what that means. Does that mean July 9th, or does it mean September 7th?
I'll turn it over to Mr. O'Neill.
It says, it says in here, a new boiler, July 9th. Oh, so yesterday, the new boiler started yesterday?
I think, if, if it didn't start yet, that was at the time that we reported, I think we should push back till the end of this week or start next year.
Oh, good. Okay, great. Then, the other thing, and it's actually on the same page in this report, but building and grounds, there is a reference to the staff working on the grounds landscaping maintenance, which, the landscaping looks wonderful. I was just wondering if you could explain how that contract with Hanover Nursery works in conjunction with our own building and grounds?
Sure. So we, so we identified the need for an upgrade to the Luzerne County landscaping events. We moved forward with an RFP process. We put up our proposals. We received numerous proposals from different vendors. We went with Hanover Nursery for what they could be done. They've done a phenomenal job, and our, our building and grounds crew are upkeep of, of that. So they were out spraying and watering and, and upkeep as well. I worked, we worked very closely with Mr. Parsnick as well on this one, as Mr. O'Neill and the building and grounds crew, and most especially our building and grounds, you know, pseudo-custodian historian, Mr. Mark, Mark Rakowski, who spends just, you know, hours and years of his life on our south lawn, working on those plants. So he was also brought in to, to work with him as well.
So Hanover Nursery did the design and the initial landscaping?
Correct.
Is that what you're, okay.
Correct.
And then our building and grounds people are doing the upkeep?
upkeep, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And piggybacking on that too, Mr. Pedri, can we extend that vision down the River Common a little further? That too is part of the...
I have Eddie turnovers to what we're working on. Either you want to do it now, or you want to do it...
No, we're going to get to that, Mr. Haas.
So we'll postpone it later, but it's along the same lines. Thanks.
Mr. Pedri, who did the signage? Because I wanted to say that having that sign that says Luzerne County Courthouse now and some of that signage is just great.
Well, that sign out front was personally designed by Eddie O'Neill. So that, so he worked on that sign, that, that three, that three-way sign out front. It doesn't have my face on it. That was one of the things. I was, I think that was the fourth side of it, you know, but I think we missed an opportunity there, Eddie. But I think, I think he did a great job, and, and the building and grounds crew, I mean, the engineering department especially, working on the signage here at the courthouse and at Penn Place, it doesn't seem like that big of a deal, but it was, it's been a huge upgrade here to the, to these facilities.
Anyone else?
Yeah. Down in the Hazelton area, I guess people have been coming up here during the course of the day, and all I've heard is compliments of how the courthouse looks from the outside with the tarring, with the beautiful landscaping done, and the work that was done in the rotunda. And again, nothing but terrific comments of what was down with the courthouse, and as you said before, this is your courthouse, people. Come and see it. Like, this is something that should have been done a long time ago to this place. Like, this is the jewel of the valley. It's finally been taken care of.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, actually, four and five are sort of together. We had the first renovation capital plan, Mr. Pedri introduced that. We had the public meeting session last time. Some things were mentioned as far as lighting and camera, which is part of your agenda this evening. So we have questions or discussion regarding the capital plan and those options that are listed in tonight's meeting.
Yeah, I mean, we, we put that together. Obviously, we submitted the capital plan. Council asked for some other options to take a look at as well. We still stand by the projects that we feel we need to be completed, which is the paving of the, of those parking lots and the completion of the, of the first floor here for renovation purposes. We added the security cameras. Mr. Schumsky's here, if there's any questions regarding that, and the cost for the lighting as well. That council was discussing as well. Those would have to be amended and added into the plan if council wants to move forward with those or any other projects that they move forward with.
Questions for Sheriff, for Mr. Pedri or Mr. O'Neill?
Well, I have a question about lighting.
Lighting, sure.
So the lighting project, the site lighting, and I, you know, I read, what I read in the paper about, you know, some of the comments about it, that you said that it's, you know, for safety purposes. Most of the activity in the courthouse actually takes place during daylight hours.
Correct.
So do we have lighting, you know, around the, the building at night that still works?
I'll turn it over to Mr. O'Neill on this.
Yeah, there is lighting on the outside of the courthouse, on the outside of the annex building. I mean, there is lighting. I think the request was to increase the lighting in the parking area along the south lawn here, where it's not quite as well-lit in certain parts. Again, that estimate was done, it was, it was a rough estimate based on putting in new poles. There are some problems we may encounter in the courthouse lot due to the fact that we have to stay off the, the foot of the levee by a certain amount of footage. We do have electricity that was run out there during the parking lot improvement project, but again, those were preliminary figures that were put together as an idea. And then there are other things that can be done in between. We may be able to put some high-intensity floodlights on existing poles that are out there and have them shine in separate directions that would, again, improve upon what we have currently, but may not require installing all new, I mean, to install a new light pole fixture, foundation, I mean, that gets expensive when, when you start adding those costs up.
Thanks.
Anything about the cameras? The sheriff is here. Anybody would like to question that? And actually, the cameras were done through an RFP process, correct? Information. Whereas the lighting was done by an estimate with your department?
Correct.
So if you have any questions, we'll, you know, we'll have it back on the work session agenda two weeks from now, and then in August, we'll have a voting session on the last reading of the capital plan. Mr. Haas?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. I just had some, some inquiries from folks living downtown Wokesbury. They had questions about the Riverfront Common. The courthouse grounds look like a golf course. It looks beautiful here. Tip of the hat to Mr. O'Neill, Manager Pedri, appreciate that. You go down, which is still county lands, down past Market Street, down to Riverside Drive, quality isn't as good. And specific concerns with the residents were that you've got some of the, in the springtime, there's this beautiful lavender that comes up there. It's all purple, and then it, it dies off as the summer goes, and it's just green, but there's, there's patches of mulch there that have, are just empty. And evidently, there's some volunteer groups that have gone there, and they've weeded this area, but it is, it's county property. It's county responsibility. Just want to know if there's any vision to take care of that issue, Mr. Pedri? Also, Mr. McGinley, I mean, the Riverfront Parks Committee, see if, what the universities are doing, how that partnership is going. I know we talked about program and then necessarily maintenance there, but nonetheless, that's, that's a gem for those two universities, the college and university there as well.
Yeah.
Just want to see what we can do about that.
Sure, we work on this. Mr. O'Neill, if you can take the next steps we're doing over for the Riverfront Park. Actually, we just got our Act 13 money in that we talked about, so about $240,000. I think a large portion of this year will have to be spent in the Riverfront Park, and per the agreement that was approved by council, there's $10,000 that needs to go for the maintenance of that park from that Act 13 money. But, you know, I'm also concerned about some of the stones that we talked about. If you want to talk about some of those with the, from the ice jam as well.
Well, just, just as an update, we had planned on trying to do an RFP, which hasn't gone out yet, and I'll explain why, for the, for part of the maintenance. The $10,000, two, I believe it was two years ago, prior to my arrival here at the county, Evergreen was maintaining the levee that we currently maintain. That price came in somewhere around $20,000, and that was for probably marginally better maintenance than, than what we're able to do in-house, but not maintenance that... but not maintenance that would be comparable to the courthouse grounds. So, as you can tell, the $10,000 allotment really wasn't going to get us too much. What I was planning on trying to do was having them come in maybe every other cut twice a month, and then doing interim cuts in-house to try and make that money go further. The problem was that we incurred some damage as a result of this past year's ice storm. We've already spent close to $10,000 just in trying to do some remedial action on the islands down at the Millennium Circle. That was just done about two weeks ago, and it required digging out tree stumps, planting some new trees, and then putting soil back in that had been disturbed and trying to level it. It doesn't look beautiful, but the grass is taking, so at least it is improvement over what it looked like several months ago. So, because of that money that was needed to do that, I've been trying to hold back on outsourcing the maintenance. We've had our Road and Bridge staff member, John Maxwell, who works regularly with our prisoners, our minimum offenders units staff, and they've been down there pretty much on a daily basis, trying to maintain that. They've been able to keep up with it for the most part. He has anywhere from two to four individuals with him a day. So, they've been handling that thus far. Now, obviously, their work does not include detailed work on the beds and mulching and things of that nature. So, this is something we'll be looking at in the upcoming weeks to try and maybe spruce that up. We do get assistance from some of the groups associated with the Riverfront Parks Organization that come in occasionally. They round up college students and other volunteers, usually two, two to three times a year, and come out and do some maintenance on those beds. Right now, we are also faced with a very large repair bill that we're in the process of trying to get pricing for, to reinstall and repair the cut stones that were damaged at the fishing pier, which, if any of you drive by there, they're very noticeably have been dislodged and have fallen from their position and are basically laying on the bank into the river. The stones weigh several tons each. It's going to require cranes. It's going to require a new anchoring system to try and secure them so that this doesn't happen again in the future. Obviously, the ice jam that we've had was probably a 50- to 100-year event, but that repair is going to be very costly. So, we're in the process of exhausting all efforts as far as any grant funding that may be available, insurance coverage, and...
I was going to ask that, Mr. Pedri, is that's not insured at all?
It's, from what research we've done, it's not covered under the county's policy. I have put a call into flood protection, any of the recreational areas on the levee, which, probably in the area of $50,000 to $60,000 to make those repairs. So, if we don't come up with additional funding, I would very much need to utilize the recreational funding from Act 13 to try and get that work completed.
So, I like the use of the prisoners. So, two, four, or five prisoners are down there. Are they working on the river's side of the levee?
They work on both sides. I typically have...
I guess they mow grass, or?
John typically handles the mowing, and they're out there. They clean up. I mean, you would be amazed at the amount of litter and garbage that accumulates down there on a weekly basis. Trimming, obviously, is very extensive with all the areas that have to be done, with the amphitheater, with the seating there. We try to keep up with it. Again, at this time of the year, it's difficult because there's a lot of weeds growing in in places where we don't always have weeds, and we really should be spraying down...
There's a show, right, Mr. McGinley? Is it the 11th, Thursday? I thought it was this week.
We have, we have actually three events this week. Wednesday, Thursday.
It's July 11th. Tomorrow at 6:30.
And then, there's a bat submission on the 12th?
Yes, tomorrow. Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
The bat through 12. But the taming of the shrew, Harry, is at 6:30 tomorrow.
Yeah.
Are you excited? I mean, this is wonderful.
But I believe, I believe on Friday, we were contacted by Senator DeChak's office. He's completing his DNL trail. He's hiked the entire DNL trail, and he's going to be completing that on Friday, I believe at 4:30. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
At the River Common in Wilkes-Barre.
I think the event starts at 3:00. I think he's expected to finish with the closing ceremonies at 4:30, if I'm not mistaken. We're working with their office to make sure that we have all of the infrastructure in place.
The grounds look a lot better than last year at this time. They really do. So, I don't mean to throw stones, but I think maybe if we can consider expanding the vision, putting some more funds towards this as a council, maybe, to make it the best it can be. But also relying on Mr. McGinley on that Riverfront Committee to see what the universities can do. I know I've been beating that drum, and I know they're more in the mindset of programming, but it's their window on the river, too. And appreciate their partnership in that as well. I don't know if there's ever been any gains in the committee at all over the past couple weeks, or?
They really haven't had a meeting now since before the Riverfest.
Okay.
So, the next meeting will be when they call it, so. But they have not had a committee meeting since two weeks before the Riverfest, which was in June.
Even, yeah, obviously, the university kids are out of town pretty much for the summer, but maybe we can utilize them, like Mr. said, a couple times a year, they come out, maybe planting bulbs or something like that. Might be a good use of many hands. But, just like to see that be on par with the county courthouse grounds that we have that are really excellent, too. It's my vision. Anything else? Yes. Thanks, Mr. McGinley. Appreciate you.
Well, Mr. McGinley, when we were talking about the Riverfront programming, I hope that that is put on the website, every Riverfront program, because I've had to look in the paper, and then you kind of lose track of all of, like, week by week, you lose track of which...
And they have their own webpage.
They all? Okay.
Yeah, and I would like those connected to our calendar, and if you see the calendar tomorrow, it also is going to show recycling events, but not just county's recycling events, municipalities' recycling events, and like, more of a community type of one place to go to, to kind of feel to, kind of shop, kind of feel to it. And then, as every department has their own calendar on their page, it automatically will upgrade the main calendar as well. And you could also get notifications to your phone for some other things as well, so.
No. Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay, I have a question. I just thought of something. Manager Pedri, the county has a Facebook page also, correct?
We do.
All right. I don't notice much traffic on it. I'm thinking we need to promote it a little more.
Okay.
By that, I mean, we all need to share, people.
Yeah.
We all need to share it and let people know, you know, that we have it, and we'll get more likes.
We picked up, we picked up pretty quick, about 3,000 likes, but I agree, and it's funny, it's funny what gets shared more often. I see this as most down, with, I think like, oh, this, put this event up here, and that'll be doing it, and that will get shared a lot, and some other things won't as much. I see a lot of our, we post a lot of Facebook for our, for people looking for jobs. And that's as well, as well as, you know, we're going to be having, I mean, well, the county is supporting the corrections officers in the 5K for Christopher Moles in early August. The county is supporting that through our Facebook page, through our insurance as well, in order to, in order to support that issue from our fallen corrections officer, Mr. Moles. He has a 5K every year, and we'll get more information out on that as well. That's run by a separate entity, but we're happy to support that, their endeavors.
Very good. Well, thanks, Mr. Chair, for another agenda. Appreciate that. And, yeah, whatever we can do, move forward. Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
The move.
Oh, excuse me. You're right. Comment on the work session. Mr. Scheiner, you indicated?
Yes, I do.
Mr. O'La? Mr. Griffith's gone.
I'd like you to ponder what Mr. Griffith said about the ACE Commission. I got the impression after considering it this week to, seems like this, you know, my favorite topic, records, interim controls about, now that we have a couple lawyers, you know, when I looked at what ethics commissions do elsewhere, it seems like what civilization uses is rather than lawyers. And I know it's in the charter, but, you know, as Voltaire said, better is the enemy of good. And I think we're stuck there. Without any, any balance there, a lawyer can collect his $140 an hour and make easy money and just say no, without any sharing or any openness. That's really scary to me. As Brian pointed out, I know it doesn't make sense, but, you know, Pennsylvania's laws or Pennsylvania's laws as regard to assessment, you know, if the county's going to get rid of properties and not get any, it's really nice to say the phrase, we're going to put this property on the tax rolls, but the only thing that counts is money. If you get no tax revenue from doing it, it's nice to put it on the tax rolls, zero or a dollar, then maybe we ought to consider something else. I was looking at something called community gardens. I don't know, with all these organizations we have, whether they've considered this. Does the county have any community gardens? Anybody know?
Just one in Butler Township.
Okay. But if we've got small plots, I hate to be political, as you know, but one of the things that is a really great idea is Bernie Sanders, when he was mayor of Burlington, took the, similar to what we have with these unused or unclaimed properties, and turned them into community gardens and had the equivalent of the county extension teach people how to garden and provided a three-year cycle of turning over these properties. And it was a complete program, and it really worked great and provided food. And you might want to consider, I don't know what organization could spearhead that, but it's something that might be worthy of some consideration. That's it for this evening.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Before we take the motion for adjournment, Ms. Crocom reminds me the next meeting will be on the road, on Route 18 out in Lehman Township, at the MA Building, same time, but it will be at that site. So, we had a motion for adjournment, Mr. Kellherd. Do we have a second? Ms. Saban? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition, any abstentions, unheard.